Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting for April the fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. I'd like to at this time call the meeting to order. And also, we also have an observance because we lost one of our elementary students here just a couple of days ago. And we want to have a moment of silence in memory of Mark Ethan Stewart. He was a student at Roale Oaks Elementary School. So if you'll observe with me, I'd appreciate it. Okay, thank you ladies and gentlemen, once again for being here. Now, as I mentioned, our opening ceremony, we'll have the junior ROTC cadets. But first off, I wanted to read to you our members of our ensemble tonight. We have Doug Moran from Concord High School. Doug, are you here somewhere? You're set and ready to go? We got, all of them are in the back there. We've got Joseph Earp from Cox Mill High School. And then we have Blair Smith from J. Robinson High School. Bart Talbert from Mount Pleasant High School. Samuel Bogan from Northwest Cabarrus High School. And Andrew Carter from C.C. Griffin Middle School. Now, I didn't leave anybody out there. Okay, well, that's good. Now, I wanted to announce to you the members of the ROTC Cadet Unit out at Northwest Cabarrus High School. And we have Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Christopher Finley. Cadet First Lieutenant Dakota Carpenter. Cadet Second Lieutenant Jordan Barnes. Cadet Staff Sergeant Zachary Huff. And the Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets from Northwest Cabarrus are going to be making this presentation. And their leaders tonight are, let's see, Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English from the United States Air Force, retired. And Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith from the United States Air Force, retired. Would you all join me for the presentation of colors?
And that was a wonderful program you did for us there. Appreciate it. Thanks again. Okay, board members, we're going to move on now with our setting of the agenda. You've had the agenda, we've studied it, we've talked about it and all. And so, do I have a motion at this time that we approve the agenda as it's presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Schumaker, second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is that the agenda's adopted. All right, our first portion here is our recognition section. And the first one is the Impact Through Education Awards. And we've got Ms. Ronnie Boone coming to the podium. And she'll be conducting this particular part of the program. And once again, thank you all so much for being here. It's good to see a room full.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we will recognize students and staff for the Impact Through Education Awards from Wyancoff Elementary School and Harris Road Middle School. As always, we want to offer our thanks and gratitude to our sponsors for the Impact Through Education Award. And that is Concord Printing. So we really do appreciate their support. And with that, we will begin with our Impact Through Education Awards for April 2013. We'll start with Wyancoff Elementary School. And I would like to invite any members of the Wyancoff Elementary School Administrative Team to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Wyancoff Elementary School this evening is Kiara Augustus. Would Kiara and her family please come forward? Stand a little, come a little closer to the line for us. We're not going to bite you. Kiara is a fifth grade student at Wyancoff. She's in Mrs. Link's class. Teachers report that Kiara is self-motivated, charismatic, and inspiring to everyone she comes into contact with. Other adjectives used to describe this star student include vivacious, considerate, determined, and focused. Congratulations, Kiara. Wyancoff Elementary School is proud to recognize you as an Impact Through Education Award winner. Our next Wyancoff honoree is Kaylee Beard. Would Kaylee and her family please come forward? Kaylee is also a fifth grade student at Wyancoff Elementary. She's in Mr. Stack's class. Teachers say she is friendly, has great leadership potential, and is very smart. Classmates say that Kaylee gets along with everyone, is willing to help others at any time, and brings a lot to class and small group work sessions. One student described her as "the greatest friend since kindergarten." Wyancoff Elementary School is pleased to recognize Kaylee with an Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Would Mrs. Wensel and her family please come forward? She's not here, so we'll want to go ahead and read her biography just so that we can recognize her in her absence. Mrs. Wensel is a third grade teacher at Wyancoff. And this is her first year of teaching at Wyancoff, but she's been an elementary school teacher for several years. She's married, and she and her husband are currently expecting their first child. Fellow teachers describe her as helpful and student-centered, while parents say she is flexible, loving, and excellent at teaching. A student in Mrs. Wensel's class said, "Mrs. Wensel loves me and teaches me like no one I've ever had before," a resounding endorsement that speaks to her nomination for this award. We congratulate Mrs. Wensel on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Wyancoff Elementary School. And I'm going to present her plaque to Mr. Davis, or Dr. Davis. And our final honoree from Wyancoff Elementary School this evening is Michelle Pletcher. Would Mrs. Pletcher and her family please come forward? Mrs. Pletcher is a teacher assistant at Wyancoff Elementary. This is her first year at Wyancoff, and she serves students and teachers in second, third, and fifth grade classrooms. Mrs. Pletcher is married and has two sons. One son is a former Wyancoff Leopard, and the other is currently a student at the school. Students describe Mrs. Pletcher as always being helpful, willing to lend a hand, and happy while she is working. Teachers at Wyancoff express gratitude in having Mrs. Pletcher as an assistant and describe her as hardworking and focused on student learning. They also say she's a team player. Congratulations, Mrs. Pletcher, on receiving an Impact Through Education Award for Wyancoff. Would any members of the Harris Road Middle School Administrative Team please come forward to stand with their students and staff? Our first honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Sally Callaway. Would Sally and her family please come forward? Sally is an excellent student who does a great job balancing academics and extracurricular sports. She makes great grades and is friendly and respectful. She is one of the kindest and most helpful students at Harris Road Middle School. She's eager to volunteer and extremely dedicated to her academic success. Sally, we appreciate your commitment and dedication to your studies and to your sports. We congratulate you on receiving an Impact Through Education Award for Harris Road Middle School. Would Alyssa and her family please come forward? She's not here. We'll go ahead and read her information, and we will present her award to her principal. Alyssa is an extremely positive and helpful student. Aside from her exemplary grades, her classroom demeanor and attitude are outstanding. She's involved with extracurricular activities such as peer helpers and yearbook staff. She's always hardworking, dedicated to succeeding, and possesses a willingness to help others. She maintains a positive disposition and is always respectful to her classmates and her teachers. Alyssa, we congratulate you on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Harris Road Middle School. Our next honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Mrs. Virginia Velez. Would Mrs. Velez and her family please come forward? Jenny Velez is a great asset to Harris Road Middle School. She's a hard worker and a great leader. She always goes above and beyond in all that she does, constantly helping anyone in need of assistance. She not only teaches and coaches, but she has worked tirelessly with hoops for heart and organizing a great event for the students to attend after fundraising. She helps on the bus lot after school and also stays late several nights a week covering the gym. Mrs. Velez is always willing to go the extra mile, and for that, we offer our sincere thanks and appreciation. Congratulations. Elena is wonderful at all that she does. Her efficiency and calmness under pressure is commendable. She has made a seamless transition into one of the most demanding roles at Harris Road Middle School. She has been a model of warmth, helpfulness, and organization. She has voluntarily lent her musical and theatrical technology skills to numerous school projects. Elena is truly a treasure and a pleasure to have at Harris Road Middle School. Although she's only been at the school less than one year, she has become an invaluable part of the Harris Road family. Congratulations on receiving the Impact Through Education Award.
For those of you that received rewards tonight for the Impact Through Education, you probably see your picture on the website sometime latter part of the week. So be sure to check it out. Okay, our next award, our go is four point two, board members. It's the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Vaughn and Dr. Shepherd and Ms. Auger to the podium. She's already there, and we're going to make this presentation. And we thank Hillbush Ford for their participation in this monthly event.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools. We're grateful to Hillbush Ford for its support of Cabarrus County Schools and offer our sincere thanks for their generosity. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April 2013 is Monica Schroeder. Ms. Schroeder, would you, your family, and members of your school's administrative team please come forward? Monica Schroeder is a second grade teacher at Harrisburg Elementary School. She was nominated by a parent. The nomination is short and to the point. It reads, "Mrs. Schroeder is the best of the best at Harrisburg Elementary. My daughter struggles daily with math and reading, and until recently, focusing. Mrs. Schroeder is extremely patient with her and is always willing to try something else if one thing isn't working. I would nominate her a million times if I could. We just love her." Mrs. Schroeder, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for the care and concern you demonstrate toward your students. Your commitment to providing individualized attention is commendable. Now, please let Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Vaughn present you with a few tokens of appreciation, and our board members to shake your hands. And thank you.
This is the four point three, the State Athletic Awards. And we've got Ms. Donna Smith there and Mr. Brian Tyson to make these presentations.
I'd like to take this opportunity prior to introducing the student athletes, is to actually introduce our community to Brian Tyson. Brian is our new district athletic director, and we are so glad he's here. And I know it's unusual, but I'd like to welcome him aboard officially. And this will be his first presentation to you of our state athletic award winners.
Well, we're pleased to announce that we have six state champions so far this year, and that's truly outstanding. We like to commend these athletes on their achievements, not only on the athletic fields, but in the classroom as well. These athletes have a lot on their plates nowadays as far as balancing their classes and the three and four hour practices, and their homework, and weekend jobs. To achieve the goal of being a state champion is truly outstanding and just a great accomplishment. We're going to call up the four wrestlers that we had for a state champion to start with. If Heath Gleaton is in the crowd tonight. Okay, you guys will come up here and stand in order. And Troy Gregor. I was scared some wouldn't be here tonight practicing for some spring sports. Keenan Robertson. And David Klein. Okay, all four wrestlers here, great. And just to speak a little bit about each one. Heath, Heath, you raise your hand. Okay, Heath is one of the 113-pound class from Central Cabarrus High School. He is a junior and recorded a forty-five and two record this year. So quite an accomplishment. Troy, okay, Troy is a junior from Hickory Ridge High School, and Troy won the 120-pound class. And Troy was also, not only the state champion, but Troy was also the regional champion as well. So congratulations, Troy. Keenan Robertson. Keenan won the 160-pound class. Keenan is from J.M. Robinson and is a senior there. And David Klein, quite an accomplishment here. David is a freshman. And David won the 106-pound class, and he is also from J.M. Robinson High School. So congratulations, both. We also had one state champion in swimming this year, Griffin Fiedler. If Griffin will come forward. Griffin won the 100-meter butterfly. An exciting thing about Griffin is this is the second year in a row he has won this state championship. So we've got a two-time state champion. And as far as academics go, Griffin's got a 4.79 GPA. And is also ranked number four in his class of 323 students. We have one more state champion in indoor track, and that was Jordan Warren. Well, I'm six for six tonight, and that's good. Jordan won the triple jump in indoor track this winter. Jordan is a senior from Hickory Ridge High School, so congratulations, Jordan. Thank you, guys, and congratulations.
Congratulations to all those guys. Our next is four point four on the agenda. That's the Youth Art Month Awards. We've got Dr. Barry Shepherd and Mr. Merle Hamilton from the Cabarrus Education Foundation. Merle, it's good to see you tonight.
Also have Ann Dollar with us, and our president Grace Minnet is out in the audience there.
Yeah, I think Grace must be hiding back there. I didn't see her on the agenda. But we're glad you're here, glad you're here too also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Shepherd, excuse me. Just first off, how inspirational with the events that are going on in Boston today to have our colors presented and our national anthem sung by these fantastic young Americans here. I think that really sets the tone for us. There are many things that stand out as successes for our school system, but to me, number one is a safe and productive environment created in our schools by excellent administration and excellent teachers that allows our young people to exhibit their brilliance in many different ways. One expression of that brilliance is creativity, and tonight, we are here representing the Cabarrus County Education Foundation to join with Dr. Shepherd to present awards for the superintendent's art contest winners. I'm a board member of the foundation which exists for the sole purpose of enhancing the educational opportunities in Cabarrus County Schools. The foundation has sponsored the art contest for many years and hopefully will do so for many more years. The beautiful pieces of work displayed throughout this building are constant reminders of our previous winners and competitors. Each student honored this evening will receive a check from the Cabarrus County Education Foundation for $100. With me tonight, as I mentioned, are foundation president Grace Minnet and board member Ann Dollar. We would like the award-winning artists, their parents, and art teachers to come forward as I call their name. In the elementary school class, our winner is Branson Clement. He is a, they are a fifth grader at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. And their winning entry is titled Peacock. And their winning entry is titled Peacock. Next, we have our middle school winner, Gracie Haynes, who is an eighth grader at Concord Middle School with their graphite presentation of Barrel Horse. I'm sorry, I keep fumbling over my words. I've been married to a schoolteacher for 30 years and there's so many of them here, I keep waiting for somebody to tell me to take a seat or something. Finally, we have our high school winner, Hallie Bean, 12th grader at Concord High School with the acrylic paint presentation of Copperfield Sunset.
Thank y'all. We appreciate all the work that you do. You draw a good crowd, much better crowd than the city council. Looks like you have your work cut out. Oh, my goodness. Thank you again, Mr. Hamilton, for being here. And Ms. Minnet, thank you for being here also and for sponsoring this. Okay, we'll move on now. This next one, 4.5, is the Young Authors and Forever Young Authors. And Dr. Cheryl Malum is at the podium and she's ready to go.
Thank you. I'm very pleased tonight to present the winners of the Young Authors and Forever Young Authors Contest. It's sponsored by the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association. Students, when I call your names, please come line up in the front. I'll call all the elementary folks first. We'll recognize them, then I'll call the secondary students. In first grade from Beverly Hills Elementary for her entry called Volleyball, Madison Davis. Second grade from Charles Boger Elementary, Saturday Night Scrabble, Gracie Hinson. In second grade from Harrisburg Elementary, Catch the School Bus, Courtney Nix. From Weddington Hills Elementary, second grade, The Game of Sorry, Grace Lynn Donahue. From Odell Elementary in second grade, Bouncing to 100, Isadora Bocas. In third grade from Charles Boger Elementary, Finley's Favorite Games, Aubrey Holt. From Harrisburg Elementary, third grade, Baseball, Griffin Poplar. From Harrisburg Elementary in third grade, Tag Using My Imagination, Ben Wakeman. From Pitt School Elementary, The Beautiful Game, third grade, Matthew Horn. From Odell Elementary, third grade, Games That Stole My Heart, Morgan Simmons. From Irvin Elementary, third grade, My Best Game, Emerson Baker. From Beverly Hills Elementary, fourth grade, War With My Dad, Amelia Watson. From Carl Fur Elementary in fourth grade, My Day at the Field, Matthew Kane. From Fur Elementary in fourth grade, The Game of Life, Lauren Diaria. From Pitt School Road Elementary, fourth grade, Life, Riley Bennett. From Weddington Hills Elementary, fourth grade, The Amazing Catch, Blake Anderson. From Odell Elementary, fourth grade, Swish, Joey Carey. From Odell Elementary, fourth grade, I'm a Soccer Fan, Reagan Cullen. From Odell Elementary, fourth grade, My Accomplishment, Kennedy Jackson. From Cox Mill Elementary in fifth grade, Yut, The Korean Game, Samuel Park. From Cox Mill Elementary, fifth grade, The Basketball Game, Sejal Rai. From Harrisburg Elementary in fifth grade, My First Hit, Ishan Patel. And from Weddington Hills Elementary, fifth grade, A Game is Like a Story, Ashley McGuire. That concludes all of our elementary folks. If you will, formal on, go this way, shake hands with the board members. Okay, it seems that there was one name that was left off the list. And we have a kindergarten winner from Harrisburg, and her entry is entitled War, Campbell Pobler. Amonah. While she's shaking hands, are there any other elementary student winners who were left off the list? Thank you. We'll move now to the secondary folks. From CC Griffin Middle School in sixth grade, Peace, Love, Empathy, and Kurt Cobain, Jessica Bailey. From Harris Road Middle School, in sixth grade, My Stellar Achievement, Joy Jackson. From CC Griffin Middle School in seventh grade, A Game in Black and White, Morgan Garrett. From CC Griffin Middle in seventh grade, Game of Life, Cody Sharp. From J.N. Freeze Magnet School, seventh grade, Shhh, Ariana Muri. From J.N. Freeze Magnet School, seventh grade, The Rush, Isabel Norman. From J.N. Freeze Magnet School, seventh grade, Unmatched, Sumani Nuna. From Mount Pleasant Middle School in eighth grade, Special Olympics, Tatiana Portel. From J.N. Freeze Magnet in eighth grade, Truth or Dare, Samira Shani, Squires. From Northwest Cabarrus Middle School in eighth grade, Special Olympic Games, Anna Fink. From Northwest Cabarrus Middle in eighth grade, The Games, Morgan Hungkelly. From Northwest Cabarrus Middle in eighth grade, War of the Leaves, Elizabeth Morse. And our final secondary winner from Northwest Cabarrus Middle, eighth grade, The Match, Taylor Ronaldo. Were there any other secondary students left off the list? All right, congratulations, folks. And now, we'll recognize our forever young authors, who are the adults in our district and who model that it's important to always keep writing. From CC Griffin Middle School, Word Gamer Extraordinaire, Deborah Ephred. From CC Griffin Middle School, Wooden Tiles and Oreos, Lori Perry. From CC Griffin Middle School, Memories and Games, Fran Zywick. From Harrisburg Elementary, Adventures in the Forest, Denise Harrelson. From Harrisburg Elementary, The Christmas Light Game, Tina Thompson. And from Harrisburg Elementary, War, Campbell Poplar. Now, we know what happened. She was listed with the adults. Campbell, you can just skip the rest of school. You've already made it through. Thank you. I also have the pleasure tonight of introducing another category. Mr. Schu, do you want to introduce that one?
Absolutely. It's 4.6, board members. It's the North Carolina State Champion Vex Robotics Team from J. Robinson High School. I think if I'm not mistaken, this is the first time we've done this. Is that right, Dr. Malum?
I don't know. Mr. Parisi will have to answer that question.
Well, he'll be coming up here shortly, so I guess he's here.
Yes. And as a matter of fact, would Mr. Dave Parisi please join me up here at the podium? Mr. Parisi is the instructor of these students, the sponsor of their team, and he may be able to answer that question, Mr. Schu.
Yes, this is our inaugural year.
Thank you. If you would stand up there and greet your team members. This Vex Robotics Team, as Mr. Schu mentioned, is from J. M. Robinson High School, and they've won the state title. Herbert J. White, come on down. Pierre Patel. Omar Menefee. Andrew Dabs. Sean Greff. And Evan Murphy. These students are instructed by Mr. Dave Parisi, Technology Education Instructor at J.M. Robinson. The Robinson team swept the North Carolina Technology Student Association State Competition in Greensboro on March 17th. They were competing against approximately 50 teams from throughout North Carolina. Robinson's team too brought home the team's state title. Their win qualifies the team for the national tournament, which will be held in Florida in June. Congratulations, gentlemen.
You know, while those guys are taking their seat, didn't they all look sharp tonight, coat and tie? Man, that's a bunch of professionals right there. But when they're going to stick together, you never know what's going to happen. They can just move right on. You know, so we're, congratulations to all of you guys once again, and the coaches also for being here. All right, our next award is 4.7. It's the presentation of the President of North Carolina's Technology and Education Society, and Dr. Kelly Probst is here for that.
Good evening. Would Vern Coward come forward, please?
Thank you.
Hey, Vern. Members of the board, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Ms. Vern Coward. Ms. Coward is the 2013-14 President of North Carolina TIES, North Carolina Technology and Education Society. This past year, Ms. Coward served as the chairman for the annual NC Ties Conference held in Raleigh. She and her committee successfully executed a three-day conference with 2,500 educators across the state. The theme of the conference, Game On, Play to Learn. And in addition to those 2,500 teachers, under Ms. Coward's leadership, they invited students this year. And students across the state were asked to showcase hands-on technology and then were asked to teach the adults why learning can be fun. As next year's NC Ties President, Ms. Coward will conduct Lunch and Learns across the state, lead next year's annual conference, and continue to advocate for instructional technology. Ms. Coward is a 22-year-old veteran who currently works as a TF, a technology facilitator at Concord Middle. She moonlights- At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Blair Smith, Band Director from J. M. Robinson High School, for a special recognition.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, first of all, for your continued support with the music programs in Cabarrus County and also the arts through Cabarrus County. It's always a pleasure to come before you to recognize one of our own. Standing with me tonight are members of the Cabarrus County Band Directors Association, which is also a group underneath the North Carolina Music Educators Association, which is the equivalent to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association for music teachers. Each year, this organization presents an award to an administrator who is an advocate for music and education in North Carolina. This award is for improving the general status of music education, showing leadership in the arts, and effectively advocating for music education. On behalf of the North Carolina Music Educators Conference, it is my distinct pleasure to present the 2013 Honored Administrator to Dr. Barry Shepherd.
Yes.
Sometimes it's not always easy keeping a secret, but we managed to pull that one off. I think we did.
Oh, my goodness.
Once again, Dr. Shepherd, congratulations. You're very well-deserving. Okay, Board Members, we're going to move on with our meeting, and the next section is the approval of the minutes. You've had the minutes given to us previously for March 4th work session and then the budget public hearing of March 11th. Do I have a motion that these minutes be approved as presented, or are there any corrections or changes?
Second.
Got a motion, Mr. Keiger, and second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries 6-0. All right, our next section here is the reports. Dr. Shepherd, do you have something you want to bring to the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I just want to, once again, congratulate all of our students and staff members who were recognized tonight. It makes us proud, and I'd also like to thank our partners, Cabarrus County Education Foundation and Hillbush Ford, and Concord Printing for their continued support of Cabarrus County schools. I hope you noticed the Donate Life flag flying in front of our building. April is National Donate Life Month, and Cabarrus County Schools is working with another of our community partners, Carolina's Medical Center Northeast, to encourage our community to register for organ, eye, and tissue donation. This month-long observation also celebrates those who have saved lives through the gift of organ donation. Also this month, Cabarrus County Schools is supporting the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation in its annual fundraising campaign. Many of our schools and our central office will be sponsoring activities in support of the JDRF. Our district will also support the organization in its annual Walk to Cure Diabetes on April 20th. Later this week, Cabarrus County Special Olympics will host its annual Spring Games. Cabarrus County Schools' student athletes will participate in the games on April 17th and 18th, and many of our employees will be involved in this event over the course of the week. We extend our thanks to the Probst Brothers Distributors for providing 16 of our schools with $500 grants through ExxonMobil's Education Alliance Grant Program, which funds STEM educational opportunities. I want to remind our viewing audience that our middle schools are accepting instrumental instrument donations for our 6th grade band program. Wind instruments, flutes, clarinets, saxophones, trumpets, and trombones are needed, so please contact one of our middle schools if you have an instrument that you would like to donate. And finally, I'd like to speak with you about the new exams that our middle and high school students will be required to take. At your work session last week, Board Members, Mr. Fail shared information with you about the Common Exams and the Measures of Student Learning, or MSLs. Common Exams are designed to determine a teacher effectiveness and are a requirement of the Race to the Top Grant that North Carolina received two years ago. The Common Core State Standards represent the work of National Governors Association in developing common standards for states to work towards with common measurements. The Common Core State Standards were adopted by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and will serve as the basis for student and teacher accountabilities this year for reading, language arts, and mathematics. That concludes my comments for this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Appreciate you bringing your comments there, and April being the National Donor Month, as you all know, you know, I am a recipient, two-time recipient of a heart and kidney, and it's because of the National Donor Program that I was affiliated with, and it saved my life, and I'm here tonight because of that. So I appreciate Cabarrus County recognizing April as National Donor Month. Okay, so we'll move on, Board Members. Our next section is 7.1. This is where we have our guest speakers. Tonight, we have, I think, about six speakers lined up to speak. This is where you talk to us and we listen, and some of you I think we have heard from in the past, and some we haven't, I don't believe. But anyway, the first person we have registered to speak tonight is Ms. Judy Gray. Is she here? Okay, Ms. Gray's not here. The next speaker we have is Ms. Ann Ethel Lassie. Is she a Royal Oaks, from the Royal Oaks Parent Teacher Organization? So you'll be speaking on behalf of a group. You have five minutes, okay? And the mic is on your left.
Oh, sorry.
There you go. And if you'll notice, if you look on your left, on your left, you'll see the little thing. When it gets orange or yellow, that means you've got 20 seconds left, okay?
Okay.
And when it gets red, that means time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ann Ethel Lassie, and I am a concerned parent from Royal Oaks. Sorry, I'm so nervous. I have a fifth grader and a kindergarten who cares about their staff and peers. I myself was a very healthy person until I began to volunteer at Royal Oaks. Both me and my oldest daughter was diagnosed with allergy. Don't get me wrong, I really enjoy volunteering. Who said that breathing asbestos wasn't harmful to our health? Asbestos gave off tiny particles which lodge in people's lungs and gradually kill them, and it is extremely dangerous to breathe it. Also can give you cancer. I am so disappointed how our school has always been left behind so many times. Our school is a low-income school. Half of our students have a free or reduced lunch. There are so many innocent children in our school that is having a health problem. I am sure some of the staff are too. When will it be the right time? Is our staff and students' health not important? Without our staff and students, there is no Royal Oaks. If you were in our shoes, what would you have us do? If you don't want to hear us or see us again, please do the right thing. My husband, who has served overseas three or four times fighting for our freedom, when our children is breathing harmful and dangerous chemical. I know that some of your children goes to a great school that doesn't have asbestos. If you find out that the school your children attend has asbestos, you would have the problem fixed. And throughout all the school that my oldest child has attended, these staffs are the most thoughtful, caring, and understanding staff I have ever met. So please have an open mind about our wonderful staff and student at Royal Oaks. Our staff and student has been through a lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
You had some time left over there, so you did very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, our next registered speaker is Mr. Liam Shannon. FC Carolina Alliance is Mr. Shannon here? There he is. Come on up, and are you speaking on behalf of a group or as an individual?
I am. I am, on behalf of the club.
Okay, you have five minutes. Okay.
Thank you. It's nice to see you all again. As mentioned, I'm here representing FC Carolina Alliance, and before I get on to my comments, I'd just like to say that you recognized, in fact, two of our players, and in fact, two of our coaches this evening with Ginny Valers and Fran Zywick. In fact, the reason Fran wasn't here this evening is because she's coaching for me, so please don't hold that against me or her. So as I mentioned, I'm here representing FCCA, and we would like to distribute soccer program flyers to each student in every Cabarrus Elementary and Middle School. We understand that the county has a new and understandable policy regarding the distribution of flyers in the schools. I am here today to ask you if we can be an exception to this rule. FCCA is a community-based club, and our community is Cabarrus County. This weekend, FCCA is hosting one of our two annual soccer tournaments, drawing in an estimated 9,000 visitors to Cabarrus County with an approximate economic impact of $300,000. FCCA supports local charities in the area, including Autism Awareness, who we allow to sponsor our uniforms for no cost. And as an FCCA representative, I also work under the excellent guidance of Dr. Kirk as a member of Senator Lee's Educational Leadership Alliance, assisting in the development of the Logan Community in Concord. FCCA has run the County Middle School League for the past eight years, and every year gives out approximately $3,750 in middle school scholarships. In addition, we give out approximately $30,000 in club scholarships, the vast majority of which goes towards Cabarrus students. As a club, FCCA has also run free after-school clinics for the County Kids Plus Program for the past 18 months. I do not ask this favor of you lightly. However, distribution of these materials in the schools directly into the hands of students and not placement of the materials in the front office greatly impacts our development as a club, and therefore our ability to sustain our economic impact, charity support, scholarship fund, and pro bono work, all of which benefit Cabarrus County students. We would like and greatly appreciate is, if, excuse me, as a board, you would be able to grant us permission to distribute these flyers to each elementary and middle school student. If you would also be so kind as to inform us of your decision as soon as possible, it would be a huge help to us, as our planning and printing of these flyers needs to be completed within the week. Thank you very much, again, for your time. Really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be here. As I said, it's nice to see all of you again, and I just wanted to get on record, since I have time. Rhonda, I love those shoes you're wearing tonight. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you also, Mr. Shannon. Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Self, and she's speaking on behalf of Coltrun Web Parents, and so, Ms. Self, the podium's yours. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I had hoped I would be talking to you prior to a vote that was supposed to take place today in terms of a second STEM school being at Patriots, but that vote was moved to last week. We didn't know that there was a possibility that a second STEM school was even in the talks. We, as the Coltrun Web family, have a lot of concerns about that decision being made in haste without fully investigating all of the opportunities that were going to happen when making a decision like setting up another STEM school all the way at Patriots. The parents hadn't even been notified of any changes that were happening to our program, and it was discovered through the Independent Tribune last Wednesday that the vote, that the board had actually voted on the proposal rather than waiting for today, as indicated by the agenda and as confirmed when I spoke to the county, that that's what was going to happen. With that said, a vote was conducted, and without the parents' voice being fully understood. On Friday, April 12th, a letter was sent home with 65 students detailing how this change would affect them. These families could choose to keep their students at Coltrun Web, but they would not have busing through, they would only have busing through the 2013-2014 school year, and after that, no bus transportation would be provided. So 65 of our families got a letter on Friday afternoon, well past the deadline of being able to get on the agenda to speak, and were told, "You are being forced out of Coltrun Web." That's it. We were told we were grandfathered in, and that busing would be provided based on the proposal that was voted on and was accepted and voted on, that Cabarrus County would continue to provide transportation for all STEM families through the current hub stop system, and that is just not true. In addition to the current busing system, it's also been found out that if you are attending, if you decide to keep your child at Coltrun Web, we'll bus you for one year, and after that, it's on you. Coltrun, we, as parents, took a leap of faith in this program, and the bargain was that we would give you our children, we would pilot this new program for you, and you would provide us an excellent education and busing door-to-door. One year into the program, you came back to us, parents, and said, "Can't do it. It's costing too much money. We were going to create these hub stops." So most of us still have to drive our children within five and 10 minutes away, but we do it. Some of us drive our kids all the way to school. And now you're telling our families, 65 of our really good, very active families, that "Sorry, we're reneging on our part of the bargain, and if you want to stick at Coltrun Web, you have to provide your own transportation." You're asking these parents to make a decision of moving their child for the third time. Most of them came from a homeschool. They made the leap of faith. We all went to Coltrun Web together, and now you're saying, "Well, you can go to Coltrun Web, but we're not going to bus you. You can go to Patriots, and we'll take you there. If you decide to go to Coltrun Web, you can stay there, but your sibling can't." So, and then on top of that, we've asked these parents to make this decision in five days. Oh, by the way, you have five days, and oh, by the way, you can't get in front of the board. You can't talk to them about your concerns, because it's Monday, when you fully realize the impact of what has just happened, and you call the county, and you're told, "No exceptions. No exceptions." I wanted to come here and talk to you about the inequities of the two programs that was going to happen. Patriots in a very affluent place. The median income of houses being developed there is $300,000. Every day of the week, they will be able to out-fundraise Coltrun Web and provide a completely different experience, STEM experience, in Coltrun Web with what? We have a mixed population. We have a 50% free and reduced lunch rate. In addition to that, we have a huge renting population. In our best efforts, we could never compete in fundraising for what Patriots is going to do. And that was the initial impact we realized, the inequity in the funds that they were going to be able to generate. The inequity in the
proposal that was voted on and was accepted and voted on, that Cabarrus County would continue to provide transportation for all STEM families through the current hub stop system, and that is just not true. In addition to the current busing system, it's also been found out that if you are attending, if you decide to keep your child at Coltrun Web, we'll bus you for one year, and after that, it's on you. Coltrun, we as parents took a leap of faith in this program, and the bargain was that we would give you our children, we would pilot this new program for you, and you would provide us an excellent education and busing door-to-door. One year into the program, you came back to us parents and said, can't do it, it's costing too much money. We were going to create these hub stops. So, most of us still have to drive our children within five and 10 minutes away, but we do it. Some of us drive our kids all the way to school. And now, you're telling our families, 65 of our really good, very active families, that sorry, we're reneging on our part of the bargain, and if you want to stick at Coltrun Web, you have to provide your own transportation. You're asking these parents to make a decision of moving their child for the third time. Most of them came from a homeschool, they made the leap of faith, we all went to Coltrun Web together, and now you're saying, well, you can go to Coltrun Web, but we're not going to bus you. You can go to Patriots and we'll take you there. If you decide to go to Coltrun Web, you can stay there, but your sibling can't. So, and then on top of that, we've asked these parents to make this decision in five days. Oh, by the way, you have five days, and oh, by the way, you can't get in front of the board, you can't talk to them about your concerns because it's Monday when you fully realize the impact of what has just happened, and you call the county and you're told no exceptions. No exceptions. I wanted to come here and talk to you about the inequities of the two programs that was going to happen. Patriots in a very affluent place, the median income of houses being developed there is $300,000. Every day of the week, they will be able to out-fundraise Coltrun Web and provide a completely different experience, STEM experience in Coltrun Web with what? We have a mixed population, we have a 50% free and reduced lunch rate. In addition to that, we have a huge renting population. In our best efforts, we could never compete in fundraising for what Patriots is going to do. And that was the initial impact we realized, the inequity in the funds that they were going to be able to generate. The inequity in the experience they were going to be able to provide, because when Patriots decides to raise $50,000, they can do it. If Patriots decides that they're going to take their money and they're going to send their fifth-grade class to space camp, they can do it. If Coltrun Web wants to do something like that, it would take us years. Our kids would have completely different experiences. That side of town is growing so much that in two years, it won't even be a school you could lottery into. Because Lennar Homes alone last week sold 11 lots, and that's continuing to grow. So, I ask you to go back and to rethink the impact that you're having on the Coltrun Web families. I can tell you today, I took calls from 10 different families who are all upset about the impact this is having and basically the force, that they're being forced out of their school. And we would liken up a response back in terms of how is Cabarrus County going to take care of Coltrun Web like you promised you would.
Thank you, Ms. Self. Our next speaker is Ms. Keisha Sandage. Keisha, I think you were here recently. Is Mr. Sandage here as well?
He isn't. Somebody has to watch the kids, so.
Okay, all right. Well, you got, you're speaking as an individual, I believe. Is that right?
I am.
Okay. All right, you got three minutes. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Well, it seems as if I come before this board yet again to talk about health and safety for our children and staff at Royal Oaks. I do this and will continue to do it because my child is not safe within a structure that she is forced to dwell in for a significant amount of each school day. Today, there is no question in my mind that if we were talking about your children or children within your family, I wouldn't feel now as if my back was against a metal wall. I'm clueless as to why other structures and programs throughout the county have taken precedence over several individuals' health and safety. You got to excuse me, not feeling too well. When I think about sending my child to school every day to inhabit within such an environment, I want to cry. I'm angered, such that I feel I must do more, and I will not stop fighting for what Royal Oaks so desperately needs and deserves. A few weeks ago, I rented the movie Won't Back Down to see if it could provide insight into what we were up against in speaking to and challenging, if you will, a school board. After concluding upon that movie, I was more encouraged than ever before to stand up for what my child has the right to and what my tax dollars pays for. I urge you all to view the movie if you haven't already to help you gain a better understanding of my position and further an explanation for actions I'm willing to take going forward. By the way, Dr. Shepherd, I loved your letter to the Independent Tribune last Friday that quotes, "Creating learning environments for our students," well, no, "Creating learning environments is our duty to the taxpayers of Cabarrus County and our responsibility to all students, one of the measures of which a nation's greatness is how it treats its children." I'd like to know how this holds true when we still have students at Royal Oaks breathing hazardous toxins every school day. As you can probably tell in my voice, my persistence and past correspondence between myself and several of you, again, I'm very angry and frustrated with the manner in which this and preceding boards have handled health and safety at Royal Oaks. Now, you may report that several Cabarrus County schools require money, and I do, I get that. However, I have to bitterly be honest with you and say that that's not my concern. If I would not be standing before you tonight if my child's health and safety was not at risk. So, as you go home tonight and rest in your comfortable beds and breathe your clean crisp air, consider this, tomorrow, several children and staff at Royal Oaks will not be afforded such luxury. In closing, I genuinely hope that you hear my cry for help from all of you and not an individual attack on your characters. Thanks for your time, and I look forward to concrete answers that clearly establish and answer the following. Who is responsible for adding Royal Oaks to the upcoming budget as an urgent task for completion? And I see that's my time. I will email this to you.
Thank you. Once again, Ms. Sandage, for being here again tonight. And that concludes all of our speakers. You said Mr. Sandage was not here, so that concludes all of our guest speakers tonight. Once again, thank you all for being here, and we'll take what you had to say under advisement tonight. Okay, we'll move along with our agenda. 8.1 is the approval of the April 15, 2013 Consent Agenda. These are items that we discussed previously in our work session, and we have given the nod to put these on the consent agenda. So, I need a motion at this time that we approve the consent agenda as it's presented. Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Phillips. Do I have a second? Mr. Shoemaker seconds the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Consent agenda is approved. All right, now, we're going to move on to the action agenda, which start off with 9.1. Got Ms. Kelly Clutz to come to the podium. We're going to look at adopting the proposed 2013-14 budget. Okay, Ms. Clutz?
Good evening. I have pulled an excerpt of the document that I presented last week that summarizes our local budget request, and that's before you. I will just make a couple of comments regarding some questions that we had. I hope that we've answered all the questions that you had last week, and up until then, if not, please let me know. Just a couple of things to keep in mind as you're considering adopting this budget. For clarification, our local current expense is a continuing, reoccurring expense that we have, and we would expect to increase every year. In previous years, we've not been so lucky. It's either remained stagnant, but it hasn't increased. The difference that I want to talk to you about is the capital outlay. So, a capital outlay is not a recurring item, and we can't expect to, if we get a million this year, get that same million next year. You have to make that request every year. In speaking with the county contact today, she indicated that that is not built into the tax base. Capital outlay funding is not built into the tax base. Generally, that's funded from their fund balance, and that's why you make that request year by year, and it's not a guaranteed continuation, recurring dollars. So, I'll start with your questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clutz. Board members, you have it. We talked about this last week. She's provided for us a summary of the local requests, and I'd like to give the board opportunity to ask questions again before we move to adopt this proposed budget. So, we'll start on Mr. Shoemaker's side if you have questions. Now's the time to try to get them cleared up because we will be expected to vote on this this evening.
I'll pass.
Okay, that means you clear until, at least for now, right?
Well, for right now. I know there's some others that want to talk about some things, so I'll let them carry the conversation.
Okay, if you'll key down then, Barry. Okay, Mr. Kiger, you want to bring your questions forward? I know you have some concerns about a couple of things.
Well, I do. I don't really have any specific questions. I do have one. I'm okay with the presentation. I'm okay with the direction we're going. I think that the people, you know, I thought it was interesting last week when you put the picture of the committee as the last slide, because that really drives home the point of how many different people had input in what we were trying to accomplish here. And I think I've used the term up here before, you know, I don't ever want to be the Johnny come lately, if, oh, well, just jump in at the last moment, start telling everybody what they did wrong, and we should be doing this, that, or the other. So, very broad and generally speaking, the direction we're trying to go, trying to lay out our needs, being very clear and specific, having county input on that committee, I think, was very important. So, by and large, I'm okay. The one concern I do have, and it's not that I oppose doing the project, but at this particular time, I'm just not sure it's prudent to do the field turf over at Central Cabarrus. Maybe if I could ask Donna to the podium and maybe ask her a quick question about that. Donna, thank you for coming up. Do we have any more information on kind of where we're, what we're trying to accomplish or where we're trying to go with the field at Central Cabarrus?
We certainly do. We've actually had two meetings, and first meeting was actually folks internal to Cabarrus County. We met together talking about the turf issue and what were our possibilities in terms of making folks aware of our needs. And as a result of that, there were some visits made to some areas that have truly developed this concept, and we expanded our team in our second meeting to include more county officials, too. And so, there's been several conversations now internal to Cabarrus County and others outside of Cabarrus County about possibilities. And the possibilities are looking at outside funding sources and talking about this need because our county values using our fields, I guess is the best way to say it, in a way that does not tax our infrastructure. And so, what we're looking at groups that are accustomed to doing lots of tournament plays and opportunities to see, these are our facilities in Cabarrus County, and how can they help us in this endeavor? So, we're getting a thinking process. So, we plan again. We have two more meetings that are being put on the books now, but as far as the end timetable, we don't have that. It's more of having discussions.
Okay, so it's more of an ongoing process. We just sort of, it happened to catch this in the middle, sort of in the middle. Okay. Well, again, I understand the thought process behind it, and I know, I would assume that the most use out there would be lacrosse and maybe soccer. I think soccer can fit in a football stadium and, you know, because football doesn't, it's not a travel sport. That's school and school only. So, there's a lot of travel teams. Lacrosse is growing by leaps and bounds. It's amazing how big that is getting. So, I guess I do understand where we're trying to go, at least to try to attract that and capture some of that overnight stay in local hotels and restaurants. I guess I would be interested really in trying to further the investigation before we committed to it, and, you know, and I do think that the investigation is well worth the time that it's going to take in meeting with the county and other officials and other entities. But I guess generally speaking, and I'll just wait to hear what anybody else has to say. My initial thought is maybe I'm okay with everything except for that one little piece, and we just maybe set it to the side and continue to investigate and then go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Also, Mr. Walter, you have your questions ready.
Are we asking specific questions on specific items or just generally?
In general, because we're going to be, you know, if you don't speak on it, I'm assuming you're going to vote for it.
Okay.
And if you've got something else you want to add, you need to add that.
Well, in general.
Let's iron it out.
I mean, we have a committee, and I do appreciate the work. I mean, that's a lot of work, a lot of time, I mean, four days worth of going around, going through these projects. I was not on the budget committee, so I can't, I don't really want to, don't think it's my job to really pick and choose on projects and just to kind of look at it as a whole. And I am struggling with the total number. That's just, to be honest with y'all. I mean, we've got, you know, totals up to almost $25 million of needs. I mean, that's, and that's just, those are our priority needs. We still have needs well above that. We didn't talk about the school needs, the capital improvements, the schools that were needed, the issues that were brought up today. That's not even covered here yet. I mean, I look back last year, and last year, we were talking, kind of leave it flat because, you know, it wasn't prudent or fiscally responsible to ask for an increase at this time, and it was, you know, the quote that was given was the unemployment rate and some other issues about just the burden on the taxpayer. Unemployment rates haven't changed much. There's still a lot of people out there hurting, a lot of people out there without work. Another comment was about trying to live within our means. When we're looking at a budget, we kind of look at the revenues. What do we expect the revenues are going to be? And can we make our expenses kind of match that? And I know the game, I understand the issue, but if we don't tell them we have the need, they're not going to fund it. But I just have a hard time asking that we ought to be increasing, you know, almost doubling what we ask our local, the county commissioners to pay for, when we know based on their work sessions and their retreat that they're not expecting that type of an increase in the tax base. So, at this point, it's just, and that, and the other issue that's troubling for me is some of our goals were to increase or reduce class size at some point and give teachers more time in the class, more time, and I'm not sure that this budget accomplishes that goal. So, those are really my thoughts that I'm struggling with. I want, I think there's got to be a way that we express these needs to the commissioners to let them know that it's definitely, but as a budget, I mean, that we're voting on, that we're saying that, you know, we think that they ought to be supporting us at that level next year. I don't know if I can, I can, I could say that, maybe a little bit less. I know they've cut us for the last four years, going back, and I appreciate the spread, the history here.
Just one correction. They have not cut us. They've continued to hold the funding, although when we increase students, it feels like a cut.
Well, as it was saying, it's really a loss because you've got, what, three or four thousand more students without much of an increase. So, those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And I know it's heartfelt, this, you know, you guys, especially the new members, you know, all of you three, and then Barry down here, and I've been through this. This is the 11th time, I think, and we go through it every year. And, but one of the things that has gotten us, and Ms. Clutz, you might want to elaborate on this, I seen an email that you wrote earlier. One of the reasons, you know, we can very easily say, well, the commissioners don't fund it, commissioners don't have the money, this, that, no, we can always just throw it on the commissioners, but that's not really fair because we haven't really formally asked for much more than our continuation budget in the last several years because we had to reduce a couple of years ago, and we haven't even recovered from that yet. And so, the only way that we're ever going to pull out of the hole that we're in is to ask for funding. That's our job, is to ask for funding, is the commissioner's job to find it. And we've talked about this before and in our chair, vice chair meetings, and it may come down to sometime in the future, a bond referendum, and I know they've entertained that thought, but how long that will be, I don't have a clue. I can't tell you or anyone else, but I think with the needs that we have and the, we made a presentation this time last year of our capital facilities maintenance needs was close to $200 million, and that didn't, you know, include a lot of the things that we now know that need to be on that list. And to come up with that kind of money, we're not going to be able to come up with that kind of money without a bond referendum, and then you've got to, you know, you've got to pay this back, and it has to be a tax base that can offset that, and we just don't have that. But we have to start somewhere, and to my best recollection and the best that I can see, this is a starting point. And Ms. Clutz, if you want to elaborate a little bit more, you can on that, or we'll just go on down, let Mr. Harrison, Mr. Phillips talk, and then you can wrap it up with however you want to do it. So, I'm going to leave that up to you. Do you want to?
I just want to reiterate one thing that I said last week. The reason I remember that I said it is because I read it in the newspaper just a minute ago. But this is, it is our request. We know that our needs way exceed the ability to fund for the county, and that has been expressed to the county on multiple occasions, but we do feel like we do need to present our immediate needs. We do not expect them to fund us $24, $25 million. I would love to be able to sit here and say to you, I expect them to fund and they're going to fund, but that, by far, I would never expect them to fund the $24 million. I want them to have a way to make good decisions based on good data.
Thank you, Ms. Clutz. Mr. Harrison, you want to continue on with your comments, questions?
Well, probably because it's our first, my first budget and the budget, first budget of several of us here, seems like a lot to chew on. I worry that in the previous years where you've given us data of our request and the actual amount provided by the county, it's been close each of those previous years. We've asked for X, the county has given close to that amount in those previous years. It would, of course, be an awkward situation if the county was, we're not able to provide close to our $23.54 million this year. I guess what I'm saying is we have to have a sensitivity to what the county can actually provide in this fiscal year, even though previous years have been somewhat close to the actual amount that we've requested. And that's just the political reality of it. But we have said what our needs are, and I respect the committee's efforts, meticulous efforts. I really, really do. So, I'm just struggling with, you know, how to proceed. I know the numbers are there, and if we don't ask, we won't get. I'll have to take a vote, but I'm, you know, waiting to hear what my other colleagues on the board tonight also have to say. But again, thank you for all your work, and I think the real hard work actually starts now to make the presentation to the county and to, for the- and to, for the entire board to support what the majority of the board states tonight, so that we can all go forward as a team, and so that we can all go forward as a cohesive school board promoting to the county the vote that we actually take. I do wish all of us were here tonight, but that's what it is. And we'll go forward. Much of that sounds like Harrison is neutral at the moment, but Harrison is thinking about his options. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips, you have your questions, comments?
Okay, well, my questions are going to be prefaced by a little bit of a background discussion. You know, I understand some of the concerns that I've heard already, but I think as members of the school board, we have an obligation to say to the county, this is what we need in order to maintain a quality, a high-quality school district in this county. I still remember last year, one of the things that Dr. or Mr. Schu said about this same time was that he commented that the insured value of the assets of the Cabarrus County school districts is about $1 billion. That's just the physical assets. Now, there's much greater assets that come and go from that building every single day. But I would argue that the Cabarrus County schools are one of the stronger assets of this entire county. It's why I moved here. It's why a lot of other people have moved here. And it's why in the future, our housing prices will stay higher if we continue to keep up the quality of our schools. But this school district has been squeezed the last four years. And you can only squeeze so much before cracks start to form. And I can see the cracks forming. I give the analogy of if you want to save money on your automobile, you don't have to change the oil every 3,000 miles. You can just stop changing oil on the car. It's got to continue to run. It'll be all right. And you've saved money. And that's basically what our school district has done the last two or three years, is we have cut to the bone on things that need to be done, but we have postponed them. And if you continue to postpone them, then just like that automobile, we will come to a halt. And so this budget talks about what needs to be done. Now, I also understand, you know, there's what we want and what we get, and that's going to be two different things. But if I was going to select two things out of the entire request that I truly hope the commissioners will be able to give us, that is the increase of supplements, the salary to the staff, so that we can be competitive and also to reward the staff for going through these hard times. If you were a brand-new teacher, starting here in 2008, 2009, you have had in five years, a grand total of 1.3% in salary increase. All right. When I started working for Shell Oil Company as an assistant research engineer, I got a 3% salary increase after six months and another 3% after 12 months. So the private sector is, has been squeezed too, but we're given raises again, and that needs to happen to our educators as well. The second thing that I would like to see happen is that we do get the 20 additional teachers at the elementary school level, so that we can increase the planning time for teaching staff. We're implementing the Common Core, which is an entirely new way to teach, and we're expecting these teachers to teach five, six, seven subjects a day with 45 minutes of playing time per week. Now, I come from a family of educators. My father was a college professor, and he was famous for his great lectures. And so when I got to a point in my career where I was having to do training, I asked him, you know, how much, how much time did you prepare, you know, how much time do you allocate to prepare for a lecture? And he said that for every hour of a lecture, he spent three hours of prep time. All right. We're giving our teachers 45 minutes a week. So if we want high-quality teaching, we have to give teachers time to prepare. And that's what these 20 extra will do. Now, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'll just say, I agree with Blake. I would like to see us remove the artificial turf project from the capital list. I would like to, I don't think we're, the project is developed enough yet to say, yes, let's do it. I hope that we can find alternative funding sources because it will serve more than just the school district. And so hopefully, we can bring that back up later, later this year once we have a better sense of how that could be funded. And just a couple of other things that have come up, you know, from feedback from the parents that have spoken here, not just tonight, but in previous meetings. There was a request from Coltrane Web for a full-time technology teacher. Now, it's my understanding that if we get these 20 additional teachers, they are going to be specials. They're going to be for like PE, art, music, so that the regular teachers will have time to plan and they'll send their kids to the special classes. So conceivably, one of these 20 teachers would be assigned to Coltrane Web and could be the, a technology teacher if that's what is so chosen. Is that, am I interpreting that right?
Hi, is Jason here? No. I assume the request would be to, okay, she's going to help.
The time at each school is divided by the number of classes they have. So the larger the school, the more days per week. So if Coltrane Web has five days per week of their teacher, once they've taken care of art, music, and PE, then we could begin to think about possibly technology. Okay?
Okay. So this proposal in some way could, could address that if that's the decision that the principal and the county staff take?
I mean, it could begin to, but it's all based on size. Okay? So the smaller schools get three to four days per week. You know, it depends on how it's divided. Right now, the plan is to increase the art, music, and PE time.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other thing that's come up several times is the condition of Royal Oaks and desire by parents there of a, basically a totally refurbished school. Maybe one of you who is on the building committee can talk about it. But my understanding is the reason why we didn't put that project on the capital list was that we basically have no place to put those children while we would be rebuilding Royal Oaks. At this point, there is no space that would be able to accommodate 700 students. Is that right? Is that?
I'll go ahead and address that. There's another actual, another project list that's $200 million that we have not, as a board, actually had a chance to look at. And in fact, we are having a meeting this, this week, are we not?
Wednesday.
Fingers crossed. Hope we can get there. But we will be going, and then there's a $10 million appropriation inside that $200 million for Royal Oaks. However, I don't know totally what the scope of that appropriation, how it's, and that's one thing I've asked Lynn to come prepared to talk about this week, so we understand kind of what the scope is for that, for that appropriation. That's not in this because it was such a large scope. There are some constructibility issues that go with that. And part of it is, what do you do with the students at the school when you, when you decide to go and tear down half of it or do a lot of asbestos abatement, as you heard some of the concerns by the parents that we heard from tonight about asbestos being there. So there will be a major abatement program that will have to go on with that school. And during that time, we'll have to figure out what we do with the students. So there's a lot that goes on with that. And I don't know if that's baked into the 10 million. That's, that's another piece that we have to start asking some questions about is, you know, how much money have we baked in for constructibility, for movement, and then that kind of thing, so we can make it a complete project. But I'll give, I'll yield the floor back to you so you can finish what you were talking about.
Okay. Well, I do, you know, for the parents from Royal Oaks, I can point out that there are a couple of responses that we've already made to their concerns. First, we've already approved money to reconstruct the interior where the central office, or where the school office is, so that there will only be one way in. And once you go in, you can only go to that office. You can't go wandering down the hall. So that addresses one of the major security concerns. Also, for Royal Oaks, as well as our other open campuses with multiple buildings, we have money in the, in the building's maintenance budget to construct some kind of a fencing so that we can control access to the, to the campus and that you will only be able to enter through the, where the door where the main office is. So those are two, two, two things that we can do at least in the, in the short term while we work on the grand plan of how do we address the, the major shortcomings of the building.
And you, just to go back to your original question, that is a constraint. I mean, look, just, you know, that, all of what Barry said is true, but boil it down to what you'd mentioned is, yes, there are X number of students that, that's part of the constraint of trying to figure out what we're trying to do there. Yes.
Okay. So with all that, what, I would like to partially address David and Rob's concern about we're asking for too much by suggesting that we, we reduce the request by adjusting, instead of saying that, assuming that we're going to get a 5% increase in salary from the state, that we'll only have a 1%, which would then say that we only need 1% for the other, the locally funded positions. And then we've already taken out, we've already paid for the security festivals for the elementary school. So I think that's about $468,000 that we could remove. And then we also remove the $800,000 for the field turf at Central Cabarrus. So I don't know what that adds up to, but that would be slightly new numbers. I think you emailed us with what that adjustment would be. It comes down to, well, $23,539,053, but that's not including the $800,000. So we take another $800,000 and it's 22 something. So if you can do that math, that was, that would be my recommended, recommended change.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. You all good to go now? You're all good. Dr. Shepherd, you want to make a few comments, reference the proposed budget?
Well, I just, I want to also thank Ms. Klutz and the Budget Committee for good work, hard decisions made. And particularly since we've had to change gears with this budget. For so many years, we've been in the mode of trying to find ways to cut, to cut, to cut, to cut. And it's been, it's been different this year, trying to turn that ship around and think about what we can be if we had a few more resources. $24 million is a great deal of money to ask commissioners, and I respect that. But I also respect the traditions of this community, and that is that when we list those capital projects totaling $10 million, typically, we've put down all that we thought we needed. And then if I'm hearing you correctly, in my experience in the past, then our commissioners have gone back to that list and not necessarily funded the first thing at the top of the list. Maybe they might choose the first item, and then they go down the list further to choose another item. And that's just the way this community operates. And, you know, every, every district, every county operates differently. And so I think it's to our advantage to list $10 million worth of capital needs. No, I don't expect that $10 million in capital needs will be funded. Yes, I do believe that the Board of Education should be the group that's making the decision of which of those projects are completed, but that's just not the way we operate. And so I'll accept that. I would say, I'd like to echo some of the things you said. I'm glad to hear, Mr. Phillips, when you say that from the business community is beginning to acknowledge that there are, that we're growing a little bit at the economy and putting increases in place. And we see that, we hear that when we have employees that tell us that they're going to leave the teaching profession because, if I think I've got this right, because you can go out and do things such as checking meters, wasn't that one thing we heard, that you could go check, I'm not sure what kind of meters, but certainly it sounded like a job that, in my opinion, wasn't nearly as important. And I'm speaking about a specific employee saying, I can do that job and make more money to take care of my family. So I'm proud of the courage of this committee and of this board to say, we have got to pay our teachers more if we expect them to lead us and to bring us and providing what we need as a district to be, as we've said for so long, a top 10 school district. Also, we respect the need for planning time for our elementary schools. Our middle schools and high schools get a, high schools get an hour and a half, and I think some middle schools get, you know, close to that amount, some not as much. But I do think those are very important priorities. And I also think we've gone to a great deal of trouble to put together a salary study to show that not just our teachers, but all employees, most employees are below market. So it's a huge amount to ask for. But I've also, I also know we've heard in the past, community members going and presenting to the commissioners, and the response has been, well, you know, that request has not been made to us. So if we don't put it in writing to them, they'll never know that we need it. Now, you know, I, like I said before, I don't expect them to fund all that we're asking. But I think it's courageous, and I appreciate the direction that you've led us in, Ms. Klutz. And it's my recommendation that we adopt what's before you tonight. I do understand the piece about the field, and that's a pretty complicated matter. Donna and I and others have been working on that now for quite some time. And I understand if you want to pull that from the list and then reduce the raises back from 5% to 1%. Does all make sense to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And I could make a lot of comments on it, but I'm going to try to limit mine to just, maybe just a few minutes here. And that is, you know, I've read all the reports and all the statistics and, you know, from state to state and county to county, and this and that and all, where Cabarrus County stands amongst our neighboring districts and where North Carolina stands amongst our neighboring states, that type thing. And, you know, it's easy to blend in, not only for a school system, but for an individual. It's easy just to blend in with the crowd and be like the crowd, you know? But to be the best, we're going to have to stand out. And if Cabarrus County continually wants to be, you know, the top county in the, in the state, the top county in North Carolina, all around with the best tourism, the best schools, the best everything, it takes money to fund those things. And it's sort of like what Mr. Phillips said, you know, about your automobile. Sure, you know, you can buy a nice car and sure, you can take care of it. It'll take you a long ways. You've heard the old state, the old story that you take care of your car, it'll take care of you. Well, it's the same way with the school system. Cabarrus County has a great system. There's no question about it. People come here all the time. But one of the things is, is it's getting harder and harder to keep people. And it's getting even harder to find people to replace the ones that leave to go to other places because they can make more money. And I don't know that there's anybody does what they do for their health. I mean, they're here because they're trying to make a living. Sure, they're compassionate. Sure, they're dedicated to what they do. And that all reflects in the quality of system that we have in Cabarrus County. But, you know, as far as my part on the proposed budget here, there's two items, well, actually three, you know, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we reduce the, the expansion item on the salary increase to 1%. I would, I would be willing to reduce that maybe to 2.5%, half of what we're asking. Because I don't know what the commissioners are going to do with their own staff. And I think whatever they do with their staff, they should do with our staff as well. If they give 1%, then I would expect us to get 1%. And if they give 2%, I would expect the school system to get 2% as well. But if we ask for 1%, guess what we're going to get? If we get anything, we're going to get 1%. So I would rather leave that option open and reduce it maybe from 5% to 2.5%. And then hopefully, they will match our people with what their people get on that item. So we can reduce it by that much. And I'm surely in favor of the $800,000 being set aside for now and taken off of this budget because I think that's something that, that still needs a lot of deliberation and a lot of work on that. And if it's something the county wants to do outside of our budget, that would be fine. But I don't think we ought to include that in our budget at this time. And then also, I'd like to see us remove the $300,000 off of the Winkler Middle School access road out to George Lyles. I just cannot see spending $300,000 to pave a dirt road that's going to be very rarely used, we hope, because it's not going to be an access, an egress or a regress to George Lyles. Why would we want to pay $300,000 to have a paved road to a dead end that we're probably not never going to use? So I hope you understand that. And I'd like to see that come off. And some of the things that we have heard the parents speak to us at Coltrane Web and also at Royal Oaks, if we can appropriate that 1.1 million that I'm speaking of, the $800,000 and the $300,000 towards some of those items. And it's like you and I talked, Ms. Klutz, the commissioners have the authority, the statutory authority, to pick and choose from capital projects. That's the way they do it in Cabarrus County. And so with the outcry of the parents, we don't even have that stuff on this priority list. I mean, it may be broken down in there more, more than what we've seen. But, you know, I'd like to make sure that we've got some type of allocation on there for like to make sure that we've got some type of allocation on there for Coltrane Web and for Royal Oaks, to use some of the money that we're asking for and let the commissioners choose, we're going to let them choose what they'll fund, and hopefully they'll fund some of those things to help those two schools. Now, that's my recommendations. I don't know what the final tally would come down to, but that's what I would recommend, and, but either way, though, I want to ask the board once again if you have any further discussion, because we're going to call for a motion here, and then we'll set the motion as however the board decides. So Barry, you have anything else you want to add?
I would like to speak now. I was trying to keep it a short discussion, but I wanted everybody to be able to weigh in. In this budget, we have $5.6 million for what we call expansion, and that is to try to get our teachers back up to snuff. That money needs to stay in there. The continuation budget, which is the money that gives the incremental raises based on cost of living or whatever the commissioners deem, or whatever our governor and his legislature does deem, that's money that's just raises. I think you should leave it where it is, and I think that that's where we should have a discussion with the commissioners on what's the right number. I don't think 1% is the right number, and I believe that if the county folks here get a certain amount of raise, then we should do likewise with our teachers. If you go down further, you'll find that you have, in the technology, we need to maintain that technology, because for years, we had no technology budget, and it's just in recent years where we've gotten money for technology. So we've been behind the eight ball, and we're trying to raise ourselves up to become a top-10 system, and the only way we can be there is to put the right kind of tools in our children's hands to stimulate them and to, and make sure that they're learning and equipped with the skills that they need to carry on in business. So again, that was $4 million, and I think we should leave that untouched on the capital projects, which are returns on investment. I think there should be no touching of the $3.3 million that's on the return for investment, because those projects actually were going to give us at least a five-year return, if something even better. So we were going to end up creating some margin in the future years, once we, once those projects were implemented, and then it'll be just up to the commissioners to continue to fund us at the, at the level that they fund us in the future, once this is in place. But then we'll be able to use and shift monies around, once we've created these savings. Because of these ROI projects, then they will actually give us margin that we can reallocate for other needs, rather than going back to the commissioners to ask them for more money, because now we're becoming more frugal in what we're using and using our resources. The $7.2 million in capital projects, inside that is the $800,000 for the turf, and I believe that there's a collaborative effort underway with the community. I'd like to see that gel out more, rather than deal with that. The commissioners may want to deal with it later this year, but it shouldn't be a part of our budget. I think that should be more of a broader community discussion, rather than having that fall back directly upon us. So I believe we should still continue to ask for the amount that we asked for. If you don't ask for it, you don't even get an opportunity to get it. It's kind of like a question unasked is a question unanswered, and if you don't ask for the money, then they can't turn you away for it. But the $800,000 could be used, like Lynn said, for working on some of our other schools. I think when we go through that budget meeting this week, we ought to look at some things that surface up. When we talk about the bigger capital budget that is going to be, hell, later this week, we might look at some of those projects to see what might bubble up out of that. But for years, we have under-financed our maintenance, and we are now paying for it. So it's like the car, like Jeff had alluded to, the car that you didn't change the oil on, you waited to 15,000 to 25,000 miles, and now you've got a major head job that you got to do to it, or something wrong with that, and it's not running efficiently. Our system is beginning to start to labor under the weight of lack of attention to the facilities, and we've got to stay on top of that. And so a more, part of what we're going to do this week with the $200 million discussion is to map out a game plan with the commissioners of how to deal with this huge issue that we do have with our outstanding facilities. So this budget is just to take care of the immediate needs. That one is going to be a much longer-term item, and inside that is the, you know, Royal Oaks and even possibly another school, if that should manifest itself to our ROI study. So I'll, I'm finished with that.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Kiger, you want to bring some other clarifications, you said?
Well, I guess we're going to need a motion, but if you want to, I guess you've kind of tracked where everybody is, so that's fine. We'll just, we'll proceed from there. Well, I'll tell you what, I want my good comment. I guess I'm more of the opinion of, I'm pretty sure we're not going to get five, so I'm okay if we want to roll that number back a little bit. I wouldn't want to put it to one. I'm thinking more of two and a half, split the difference, you know, and then we'll go from there. So that's kind of my temperature on that. If I'm understanding, because the one came from the governor's budget, which we won't know that final until they work that out with the legislature, but we're going to put it in and ask it for the county to match whatever the state gets, and then whatever they give their employees, that's what we're going to ask for them to match.
Yeah, let me just clarify a moment on that.
Yes, please do.
And to give you some history in the past. So what has happened in the past is, we make a request with the information that we have available to us at the time, which at the time was 5%. That went through our Budget Committee. Then, at the end of the day, after, when a final decision is made on the state budget, the county has traditionally gone back, and last year in particular, gone back, and they did not fund that line item at all, because they didn't fund anything, no additional increases, no additional funding, but they did go back and fund the 1.2% when it was adopted by the state. I hear what you're saying about leaving it in higher so that it can match the county employees' request. That's not traditionally been done. Certainly, I would support that.
Well, and that's fine. Again, we'll get what we get, I guess, at that point in time, but to, I think Mr. Phillips was right, maybe to help Rob and Dave and pull back a little bit on the number. We can maybe massage that a little bit, you know, and between the six of us, we probably could come up with a number that we're happy with. 2.5 is the one where I'd settle in on, so, but we'll go, we'll figure it out here in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Okay, Mr. Walter, you have anything else you want to add? Mr. Harrison, okay?
In these serious discussions, I try to bring some levity, and I'm thinking of that old Abbott and Costello routine about who's on first and what's on second. I know we've gone from 24, 900, to 23, 539, and now with these other suggestions, you know, we're at some ballpark figure of 22 or 22 and 1/2, or so. I'm not sure what that number might be with these discussions, but my point is that with these perfectly valid suggestions of 2 and 1/2% instead of 5, but higher than 1%, and the various other suggestions here, with these changes that we are making tonight, should we still vote tonight?
Let me, right, we're.
I mean, in effect, I don't mean in a negative way, but some of the assumptions have been changed here by our individual preferences and our, you know, general consent.
And let me just add.
Here at the last moment, which is perfectly fine.
Yeah, and just to try to help you, David, because obviously you're new, you know, and all of you guys are, but just remember, the key word here is proposed, because it is very liable to change two or three times before we actually approve the 2013-14 budget, because when the county gets their budget, and then the state gets their budget, then if they don't coincide with what we got, then obviously, you know, you can't just pull money out of thin air, so if we don't have it, we can't budget it. So it's liable to change two or three times between now and the time we adopt our budget, you know, the final budget for 2013-14. So I wouldn't recommend putting a tremendous amount of emphasis on this particular budget, simply because it's going to change. It's going to change, and, but all this is, is a proposed, recommended expansion budget. The continuation budget will be as it was, it'll be the same. This is the expansion, and, you know, we'll get what we get. But I feel very comfortable, though, that we can make a reasonable request to them, and then they'll accommodate us in every way they can. I feel sure that they will, you know, but I'll tell you now, we're not going to get $24, $25 million. I doubt we even get 10, but we'll see how they do, because they know that we've got issues. They know that, and they're working to try to figure it out. And with the meeting that Barry, you, and some of the other people are going to have this week, hopefully, we can iron out some of those and get a plan, and we've been trying to do that for about a year now, since we first brought this to them last year. But anyway, let's carry on, because we got to move, and then we're going to get one more comment from Mr. Phillips, and then we're going to ask, have the disc changed? Would that work with you? Okay, let's get Mr. Phillips' comment, then we'll move on.
I was just going to say, I would support the 2 and 1/2% for the salary increases.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Let's take about a half a second pause while the cameramen can change their disc.